I'll call the Stevens' Boarding Commission for the Towne Packet Order. If there's anyone present on the board who would need to disqualify themselves from the cases being reviewed, this evening, please state your name and the case for the record and complete their recusal form from staff. At the time the case is being presented, that person will be listed on the table. Okay. At this time, Mr. Berry will provide us with the fully submitted roll call and establishment of the court.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In accordance with Title 30, Chapter 4 of the Satellite Freedom Information Act, writ notice of this regular scheduled meeting with the intended, as the public posted, post its authority to the local newspaper has been less than 24 hours prior to tonight's determine. Also, in accordance with Satellite on the Co section, thirty dash four thirty, during a regular call meeting, no items unless they're in an emergency may be added to the agenda without an additional 24 hours notice of vote. Roll call, Ms. Angela Perdano.
Here.
Mr. Caleb Mitchell. Mr. Brad Frady.
Here.
Ms. Kim Isler.
Here.
Ms. Diane Martin.
Here.
Mr. Don Cadiz.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we do have a forum, and items can be voted upon tonight.
Now, we receive the minutes from the last meeting on February the eighth of 2023. Does anyone have comments or concerns? Do you have a motion for approval?
I make the motion, here are personal minutes. That's right.
I'll second, all in favor, please, again. The motion passes for three minutes. We'll now move on to the business meeting. If the commission has questions, the applicant staff, or anyone in the audience, it is within their right to ask such questions. The commission will make a recommendation to town council on each request during this time. After the commission has voted on requests, please contact the county when you're done with staff, if you can, and staffs. To my best wishes, we'll make up your case completely. However, we keep reading and stimulating to ensure that applicants and the commission can hear the comments being presented by applicants and staff. Please exit and take up any additional conversations outside this room. I'll moderate that, we'll check and correct. No, I must add, I'm making sure I read that.
Oh, yes, sir, you did, okay.
At this time, I welcome the business meeting for the following. TA dash twenty-three dash zero-two, text amendment zoning ordinance three point six point D point one. This is a public hearing, public comments will be heard at this time. Anyone who wishes to speak may come and provide their name and address. The public will be able to speak for three minutes maximum. Related to the variants being presented, public will only be permitted to address the board one time. So now we have the text amendment zoning ordinance three point six point D point one. The one that revised that two, meaning lounge shall be located at least three hundred linear feet from a non-ruined residential zoning district, probably at a hospital, although their private elementary junior high or high school facility, church, or otherwise house of worship facility.
Yes, Mr. Chair, this was similar to what we saw previously, nothing changed. There was a little bit of error on the notification, so this is just seeing this once again. Nothing changed, you guys have seen it before. It's just removes that language, strikes through. The brick, Mr. Chair apparently read, removes a residential zoning district from the text in our current ordinance. So this is in conjunction with the current state ABC laws.
I wasn't here last meeting, so I guess this was brought up last meeting. Does someone want to put in a bar or lounge, like in this same, that it could be next to a house?
So our current ordinance, it states on the next page, right here in the back, and I was re-recorded. See, bar, tavern, nightclub, pub, any lounge shall be located at least three hundred linear feet from a residential zoning district, hospital, public or private elementary, junior high, or high school facility, church, or other house of worship. So we propose to remove the language that is highlighted in gray or yellow. It just says residential zoning district. So this, so there's two different criteria, and you'll see the next one, it says a dwelling unit. So for example, a residential zoning district could create problems for a bar, tavern, nightclub, whether it's close to town, or actually in this area too. She had to be so many feet, three hundred feet from a zoning district. So you're just removing that requirement to be away from a zoning district.
Okay, but then it'll still have the feet away from a lounge.
Well, that is another proposed change, and also to remove. It stays in here, we'll just bear with me when I jump ahead. The proposed text would then say lounges shall be at least two hundred feet from any existing dwelling, excluding a lounge, bar, tavern, nightclub, pub, located in the urban center and village center district. So on our maps here.
That'll be on the actual, the next book.
Yes, that's correct. So if you have the little, if you have the colorful map, okay, very great. So Village Center is going to be pink, which is about where we are located now. And the urban center in red is going to be Main Street, Hardee's, Family Dollar, Dollar General. Goes a little bit further back towards Sparkburg. It catches that section right there where Hardee's is, and then comes around with the post office. So any, I said jumping ahead now, but this text, it would remove the requirement for distances for a bar, tavern, nightclub to be in two hundred feet. It is located in the red areas or the pink areas, which the odds of a bar being, the only permitted use is going to be in that area.
Okay.
Is in the Hardee's, Dollar General, or the pink right down here. But what we're voting on now is number one. It's three hundred feet from residential zoning district. We propose to remove that section, just be in front of the ABC laws.
Why, why I don't say that, that's make it where they, remove it where it can be, it doesn't, the actual line of the zoning district now, they have to be three hundred feet from that. But now they can be up to the district, not necessarily a house or whatever, but they can be near the district line.
Correct.
Does anyone want to make a motion for approval?
I make the motion, we are approving it as we're removing the residential zoning district.
I'll second that motion. Everyone in favor, raise your hand. I think she, Mr. Carter, did you vote for one or? Okay. So that motion passes. Okay, moving forward to, so TA dash two zero two-three dash two or three, text amendment zoning ordinance three point six point D point two. This is a public hearing, public comments will be heard at this time. Anyone who wishes to speak may come and provide their name and address. The public will be able to speak for three minutes maximum. Related to the variants being presented, public will only be permitted to address the board one time. Staff will not provide their analysis or recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Following up, similarly to item A, in that same text language, this would then add, add the text, that new section three point six point D point two revised to say lounges shall be at least two hundred feet from any existing dwelling, excluding a lounge, bar, tavern, nightclub, pub, located in the urban center and village center district.
Okay. Then what was the, what was the linear footage from the, what we took from?
We're not changing. So we're not changing the linear distance. We're only adding the section where this linear distance is not applicable for a bar, tavern, located in an urban zone or a village center. So I think the analogy we used last time was the old florist or the old superintendent building for the Packard High School. That currently is in a urban center or the red area, but that trailer behind it is closer to two hundred feet. It's in a urban center district, so number one would be applicable. But number two would be applicable because it's close, closer to two hundred feet. Or like we referenced the banks, what we referenced right there, Packard Tire, in relation to like houses that may be built in an area that's not zoned for houses. They just kind of grandfathered in, existing non-conforming. You couldn't go back and put a house beside that trailer right beside Pedro's place without appearance.
But potentially, if that, if that's to be passed, the bar could be right against beside an existing house?
It could, correct.
Yeah, not conform to the district, right?
Yes.
If the house is built in the district where it's not a residential district.
It wouldn't be allowed.
It would be, the car would be allowed or they would not?
So the house would not be, let's say a bar is located at 101 Church Street. Church Street is zoned commercial or urban center. The construction of a house would not be permitted because you can't have a house in that urban center since, unless they grant, ask for a variance. I mean, that's another board, that's.
Put an existing house there, it would be.
Yeah, that's no issue. It's all about the existing, what's there now, what's present, yeah.
Like I said, this is only the urban center, really.
Correct.
Does anyone have a motion for approval?
I make the motion that we approve the text amendment that's written.
Have a motion for second? All in favor? So that motion passes. Moving forward to TA dash two zero two-three dash zero-four, text amendment zoning ordinance, table three point three. This is a public hearing, public comments will be heard at this time. Anyone who wishes to speak may come and provide their name and address. The public will be able to speak for three minutes maximum. Related to the variant being presented, public will only be permitted to address the board one time. Staff and I provided their analysis and their recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This one we just came forward to. This is revising this large table and your packet to allow vehicle heavy equipment sales within the urban center. A little bit of background, we talked about this during our first meeting in January. But you guys were referring to the neighborhood. You guys approved verbally the allowing vehicles sales within an urban center, but as posted, advertised on the agenda, it was advertised as Neighborhood General, so it was invalid, so invalid information. So this is to catch up and have the correct information. So you've seen it before, I don't think you have not seen it. But this is the text amendment to allow vehicle heavy equipment sales within the urban center. So it's going to be in the red zones on your map. And to jump forward, Angela, we have also added some language as recommended. That's going to be tech TA two zero twenty-three dash five. They kind of add some language in there that you have concerns about not having an upside each other, hours of operation, it's got to be running. But this is not a preface for this one, this is just some text we added. If we allow vehicle sales, we would have added some text to give it more definition.
Is there any questions for? Do you have a motion for approval?
You're saying all the vehicles in that language, it must be operable?
Yes, sir.
What's your definition of operable?
Guess my definition, probably with questions, definition would be different. My definition would be operable as in it would be moved, sold, for sale, tagged. It's not a vehicle that is in the shop for maintenance, or there's no tires on the vehicle, or no motor in the car. That would be more of a maintenance record shop versus actually a car lot or heavy sales. This could be, this could be a forklift, this could be heavy equipment. It could be a skid steer, it could be.
Well, I understand that, but then you know, you might have done some of these blocks like that, that some of it made needs and made the maintenance, and they just got that off.
Right.
That's what we don't, we were talking about, they didn't want, we don't want.
Well, I mean, instead of trying to keep that out of the particular areas.
Out of that, I mean, we're talking about the area right there at the satellite depot.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, that's a small area, and we don't want it to end up being a junkyard. We borrow parts and pieces from each.
Man, you guys didn't realize, the real world is, they may have off this car, and then they may be, you know, maybe they need to set tires, but they just haven't got to it yet. Might take a week or two or a month sometimes for them to need cars to get up to the point they're going to say.
Well, there's some, in the code enforcement, it's going to have some information about operable and access for repairs, so you could have that inoperable car that is in a shed or a garage or a carport or something. The idea is to be hidden and out of view. A cover is, or a car cover, there's a letter, or a text in there about a car cover. A car cover is not the one you buy, a blue tarp or a red tarp, and you strap it over there with blocks. That's not a car tarp or a cover, so.
Because strictly your definition of operable, though, it's kind of committed, but I understand what you want, and I agree with that.
Yes, sir.
That's the moment, that conversation actually there will be finished in a minute. I don't, if I'm not mistaken, like, what we're voting on now is whether or not we're going to allow it within that district. And that's why the discussion we're having now, that's correct. Does anyone want to make a motion to approve the actual allowing it to be sold there? Are you within that district, is what we're voting for right now? Do I have a motion for approval? I'll second that motion, all in favor? So that motion passes. Moving forward, TA dash two zero two-three dash zero-five, text amendment vehicle of sales, vehicles slash heavy equipment sales, dash six point eight-eight. This is a public hearing, public comments will be heard at this time. Anyone who wishes to speak may come and provide their name and address. The public will be able to speak for three minutes maximum related to variants being presented. Public will only be permitted to address the board one time. Our staff and I provided their analysis and recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The language, this is new language due to the fact our zoning ordinance needs a little bit of attention in the upcoming months and years to the, I think the last time it was revised, it was 2014. So we had, we approved the use of vehicle sales, then we had to add language, give it details of what can and can't we do. So what we propose at staff level and can't be altered by anyone. It states, no two vehicle heavy equipment sales shall be located within two thousand linear feet of each other as measured by straight lines of the nearest property lines. All vehicle heavy equipment items for sale shall be operable and for sale. No additional storage of inoperable vehicles is allowed. Hours of operation shall be limited between eight AM and six PM. One comment in regards to an operable, it may, it may help. It's coming out of our municipal code, number five. No inoperable or unlicensed motor vehicle shall be parked, kept, or stored on any premise, and no vehicle at any time shall be in a state of major disassembled, disrepaired from the process of being stripped or dismantled. Cars should be covered with authorized car covers. This excludes cars of any kind. The Towne Packet toes a bit in car for any reason, the owner is responsible for all telling the charges. So that may give a little bit of information to what is inoperable or viable. So vehicle, it could be stored, an operable vehicle could be stored or parked, covered with unauthorized car covers, a shed, or what, or something similar of fashion. And I think another thing was all car would be for sale. That was a comment last time, it's not a storage lot or.
Basically, if we're allowed the sales there, we're going to allow the sales and all of the sales.
Correct.
They're heavy maintenance, nothing more than a detail.
Correct.
And, yeah, in response to what you were talking about, Don, I perceive that as being a wholesale lot. And a wholesale person is there to turn them over as fast as they can. So I doubt really that they would be leaving that vehicle unless they're wanting to do, other people bring in for repair. And that's not what we're doing.
My opinion that is, like, there's really nowhere there to think of, like, for a car lot to go to, to have the room to break a bunch of wrecked cars in, but then, I kind of, we don't have the room to allow it for them to break in, drag cars, and fix them up and stuff. That's my opinion, I mean.
But that's what I was saying.
I mean, I don't have a problem with selling, I mean, I think that's great.
But it's a very small spot.
But I mean, what we gotta realize is, we're not just voting on the spot, it would affect the entire urban center area, just to kind of.
And then you have to make sure that the cost of that, so you know, you don't want that to begin, it looks like a junk.
And that's the following, I'm going to force, I think, they're already sort of.
So they know what happened, then you don't have any problems.
Anyone got any questions for Mr. Berry?
And there's another section in our permitted uses that Appeline's Vehicle Services, major repair, bodywork, minor maintenance repair. And the minor maintenance repair is a, a P S. Permitted, so it's a special regulations, but a major repair would not be allowed in an urban center.
Would vote on this? This might affect everyone, it's already in business.
It would not, because they would be grandfathered in. It would only affect future businesses.
We've had to have that from so far anyway. You know, as far as the, but you know, we have car lots impacted, and that's really a problem about, and then, and we have garages impacted, so they're good about what they're doing, so.
Yeah, I'd say that's always considered in place as long as they're very informed by the issue. Do I have a motion for approval of this? Can I make a question? I want a motion for approval of this. Can I make this second? All in favor? Motion passes. Moving forward, TA dash two zero two-three dash zero-five, text amendment, vehicles slash heavy equipment. Moving forward to RC dash two zero two-three dash zero-one dash four-seven-one, North Highway one fifty. This is a public hearing, public comments will be heard at this time. Anyone who wishes to speak may come and provide their name and address. The public will be able to speak for three minutes maximum related to the variant being presented. Public will only be permitted to address the board one time. Our staff and I provided their analysis and recommendations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is one we've also talked about in the past. Mr. Davis loves here, if you would like to speak, you can, you're not, you can, you don't have to speak, that's what I'm saying, but you have, you have the right to, I mean. So this is the one where satellite depot is, it's zoned as a Neighborhood General. So you guys were opposed in the past to allowing car sales in Neighborhood General, which I don't disagree with. So the other action to have more business at that location would be to rezone that. One could argue that's a spot zone, but the location to that one property to the highway one fifty store is two parcels. So it's relatively very close to the urban center as it comes down one fifty versus spot zoning, a home on the mill, village out here is urban center, it doesn't really make sense. So he, staff recommends for this property, I'll get into the legality of it. Tax ID three H twenty-nine dash fifteen dash zero one nine point zero zero. Address four seven one, North Highway one fifty, current zoning district NG. Neighborhood General requests a rezone to UC Urban Center. Advocate has submitted a request to rezone the current parcel. The current parcel has been classified for Neighborhood General for many years. Many businesses have operated from this parcel in a non-conforming pattern. That's due, we're under the county regulations. Advocate requests to operate car sales on this location, and upon discovery, this is not allowed in Neighborhood General District. Urban Center is recommended classification based on proximity to Main Street and Highway nine, law one fifty. This is assumed to be a business corridor with heavy traffic entering and exiting town, the UC District being most applicable. We recommend approving the rezone to Urban Center. And one other comment on that, this would not just stop at car sales, it would allow any other businesses to occupy this building. Correct, that's right.
So how does that affect the parcel that's, I've said the, it's going to be from the one fifty store to?
They would still stay in Neighborhood General. This is, like I said, one could argue this is a spot zone, but it's so close to the current urban center. It wouldn't, this is just an outlier parcel that we're requesting a rezone. I mean, looking ahead, it would, if those parcels were sold between the highway one fifty store and this property, more than likely it would be residential again, given the homes are existing, also have been torn down. And a new business is not going to be built there, but as you're getting closer to the business sector of town, if looking ahead, if that property gets sold or whatnot, those will be urban centers, we propose that.
So legally, that doesn't happen, but buildings are not, not being viewed as commercial.
Correct.
That's happening, right?
Correct. I mean, I, technically, it could be utilized as a home. So Neighborhood General has some things it can be, I can list those out. Could be a gas station, recreation outdoor facilities, all type of dwellings, abandoned breakfast, root pool. Abandoned breakfast, roof board, banks, daycare, post office. Religious institutions, schools, recycle center. So those are kind of some of the things that it can be right now. Is when you rezon the urban center, the dollar is kind of back in the corner. Correct.
Do we got any questions for Mr. Speaker? Pretty straightforward. Do I have a motion to approve this? I'm making a motion to approve. Second, I'll favor. Motion passes. That's all we have, only the zoom, the nine, the nine, the nine. Do I have a motion for adjourned?
Great, I'm sorry, sorry, sorry. You need to give a little bit of your time. Um, I won't take long. Um, and you can see the listing of kind of what we did the past couple of months. Um, as we all know, the residential property is not going to be busting at a senior renovation, but still got a couple of gas inspections, electrical, uh, demo for it. Uh, we've sent out several more letters in regards to month of March on the last page. You can see the letters that we've sent out, um, it's about middle of the page, two eight to three sixteen. We've also investigated a couple of items and complaints. Uh, we have found no violations on those items at the bottom, or one five two. Uh, you guys have the address in front of you, uh, one five two Fleming, two five one Deerwood, three fifty Sunset, one fifty Stone Street. Um, that doesn't mean it wasn't a deficiency at the point, at the time of notification or complaint issue. But when we visited the property, uh, no complaints were observed, uh, excuse me, no violations were observed. Um, had a conversation with the, uh, I'm not certain if we've spoken as a group since I spoke with the attorney. Um, but it would be some tough sledding to locate some of these individuals, but due process is a difficult procedure. Um, one example would be, uh, we issued a letter of violation for a property. Uh, we've tried to contact the last known address, it's, the address is in Roebuck. Uh, once you go to the address in Roebuck, there's a different owner on the property, so that potentially means that that occupant is a renter. Um, you look for background information on where this property comes from and it's coming from another address. So, uh, it could be tedious and actually, um, issuing citations to these folks. Both fines have been sent out at this time. Um, we've talked with multiple other municipalities on, on small municipalities, how they handle it. They recommended the, uh, uniform ordinance violation, uh, trying to give a Patrick. We can order one of those, it's a numerical system, has your information. Um, John Smith, one Church Street, this is a violation, sequential. Um, and then we need to physically, um, hand and summons that, hand that slip and then take it to those individuals. So once again, locating these six percent, uh, landlords could be tedious in serving that. Because they're not gonna, uh, open a certified letter or get a first class letter, tracking that is gonna be difficult. Um, not really confident in just posting the property. Um, you can post in a conspicuous location and the tenant has a state obligation, state law that requires them to protect their own per, personal property. But we better be pretty confident that if we do something or issue a fine or summons or misdemeanor, that we're protected and. Or for example, if, if, if there's an issue at Brett's house, Brett could be gone for a month or, or whatnot and we, you know, we issue a misdemeanor, he didn't even get it, he was at a town, so that could build us up for potential lawsuit, uh, for not allowing him due process on that. So it's, it's gonna be tedious and cumbersome. Um, also spoke with the judge, um, she had an accord, uh, I think it was the ninth of April, I believe. Um, I think that's correct, um, but I was actually out of town then. So I got, I got a call to her as well to figure out how many cases she wants to see. She wants to see three at a time, four at a time, one day a month, regular schedule. Um, so I was texting, taking court with her, so I need to reach out to her and physically figure out what she wants to do. If she wants to, you know, well use of her time to come down here for fifteen cases, or if she wants to come down here regularly, three times a week, whatever it may be, three times a month. Um, but that kind of concludes our staff report.
Do we know if, um, these properties that we're talking about, do we know if the taxes are being paid on these properties?
They have been paid, you can go on smart account.
So we should be able to get the address of the person who paid the taxes?
They took that feature away, it was available during COVID, um, but when me and Mr. Frost were looking at it, they removed that feature. Assuming you go up to the.
Then you can get that to the courthouse.
I, I think that's the, that's what Mr. Frost was saying, you probably have to go over there and.
Look them up.
Look them up physically. Yeah, that's correct, yeah, that's, that's very true. We noticed one thing, uh, anyone can, I can pay your taxes, um, or I can pay her car taxes.
And even is it not paid by so many years?
It's a delay, well, it's not, it's actually one year to go to the lender that they're tax sale, so that's whole property. Um. Don't whip me on this one. Uh, I think it was, uh, maybe one forty four Fleming, maybe? Um, that was sold at a tax sale. Look up that contact information on the D to sell through the county, that's the one with that in Roebuck. You go to that address and if Roebuck is in the county, it's under somebody else's name. And then when you look at that person's name, it's somebody else's address. So I've got addresses in Paclet, Roebuck, Mole and Bull Springs for the same property. So where this person's name, I don't know yet. And Joseph had mentioned maybe the county would help out with summons and issuing the summons. Um, but after talking, I think he reached out to contact, that would think they were in the business of issuing summonses, summons at this point in time. It's just not, it's not as easy just then, uh, we have to file this speed. It's not like traffic violation that you get caught speeding to that point, you get issued violation, these are passive items that you have to track down. Mr. John, Mr. Smith, Mr. Bill.
But it's, it's crazy wrong, it's, it's certainly ways to protect the property. So like, does it, you go out the country, you go out somewhere else, that the property is not going to, you dig over or something happened and do it without you knowing it.
It's very frustrating on this part because, um, you can easily find me, easily find you, easily find anyone.
Well, if, if.
But we maintain our.
If they sell the property at, at auction, the owner has like a whole year to get, to pay the property taxes up and get it back.
They're attending all paying taxes. That's the one that she. But at what point do y'all put so much effort into a lien that's put on there?
We still have to find that person. Uh, we can't put a lien on a property without giving that person due process. Because that's, that was, excuse me, uh, it was a lady that I got a lot of respect for in Columbia. She's been code enforcement and property maintenance for fifteen years and she was, she was just great. I called her, I said, so Lisa, how do I find these people? She said, that's the problem. She said, when I go, I don't let them go. She said, if I knock on the door and he comes to the door, you're getting summoned right now. Because I said, do you issue one of your things? She said, no, if I can find him, that's her problem, I'm not letting her go.
Hey, I'm at our, these three top corners, I'm really sad about.
There's a situation, there's a county that's, they had a property owner, portion of the property was sold to tax sale. And he was not notified properly. And so the county, it got his property in half, after it had sold to tax. What's the situation? What's that?
So we don't want to get in a situation like that, man.
And I would like to pursue liens against properties because that way when they, if and when they ever sell it.
Well, that was a similar situation with, uh, two forty Green Street. We made contact, we were, um, sending crews out there, attorney was cool with it, we got, you know, delivered, signed, et cetera. And we were on the cusp of issuing or, or I think council already approved a, a fee for us, a crew to perform cleaning of that. And then at midnight hour, they reached out and said, hey, I'm gonna send a guy down there to do it.
Two forty, actually.
Yep.
Yeah.
So that's possible, then that would, uh, eighteen, fifteen hundred dollars or whatever it was, where we don't lean on the property if we would have pursued that. But, um, the owner acknowledged, perceived, basically grew up and we got that.
Hey, I know you're, when we just, we just let us know kind of what's going on here. Uh, I'm not supposed to be rude, but there's really nothing else that council, our commission can do about any of that. Uh, when taxes come to me, we, we can do that, but like, it's, it's really not our business to discuss. How y'all are handling the.
Um.
I asked you, I, I'm not trying to win you.
No, no, you're fine, no, we won't take any, you know, criticism or, or, um, comments or recommendations or anything like that. Um, but I think your guys' planning mission is to be the foresight of what we want to become, maybe. If you, all these text members do not have to come from me. Um, potentially if someone was to approach you and say, hey, I would like to see, uh, more residential on highway one fifty or on Main Street. And, you know, you, you might have voted down, but at least, you know, you think it's a good idea, it's good for the town to look in that direction. So you're almost the future thinkers of what the town is to become. So you can be avenue pro and submit ideas or, or, it doesn't have to come from this side of the desk. You guys can contact me and say, hey, I want somebody to, um, rezon this or do this.
I just thought I'd have a big long conversation on the record and then y'all know how things get twisted and.
Yeah.
But I just, just taking off.
Right.
Uh, speaking of which, uh, you'll probably already heard this, but what you'll know formally is council approved for proceed with the Outlast Capital Gathers with the comprehensive plan renewal for twenty twenty three. Uh, they also noted for the company called Benchmark to do the master plan. Uh, with both those groups, y'all will be involved in that. Um, it's specifically stated in both those, uh, beliefs, in both those contracts that y'all are part of that process. So literally a focus group or meeting, if y'all be involved, involved in it and be able to make recommendations. Now, at the end, the council makes a decision, uh, but I believe and currently from all of us, I believe that y'all actually made the recommendation to council at very end of the process, the council made a termination which y'all are involved throughout that.
Yeah, but don't think that you have to go home tonight and study up for something. Uh, Benchmark and all those programs will do a good job of presenting you the information or, uh, because they're aware that you guys don't do this on a volunteer basis. So this is not your fault, you're not professionals at it, thus we've been hiring professionals to help us. So they'll provide all the information you need just to think about. So if you don't need to do any re, if you wanted to research that spine, there's no extra homework to do right now at this moment. All the information will come in the future from those units. And that's all I have.
I would expect that we're, uh, we've got contracts right now, uh, that, uh, we're reviewing. Uh, we've got one ready and another one's waiting to be signed. Once all that stuff gets signed, uh, we'll, yeah, late April into May, it's kind of taking that off. And I'll make sure that it might, and y'all are involved in that.
Sure.
Do you have any questions?
Well, is there a next meeting? Oh, we will not have a meeting, um, on May first, we will not have a meeting, no information was. We can't, if you guys have anything you want to talk about or discuss, but I don't have anything that's come in on my plate that has a meeting for next month.
Can we be consistent on what day of the week, meet also?
Yes, sir.
That's the reason I hadn't made a meeting, I've been, I scared, I'm, I'm scared of having a meeting in your pants. And we're getting one or two days nervous, you know, so that's not enough.
I would say it'd be ideal if we can coordinate with Benchmark and with our regular, regular scheduled meeting. Um, so Mr. K, Mr. Don, I can send you, uh, the meeting outline. Um, so our next meeting would be. Our next scheduled meeting was May first, but we won't have a meeting unless you guys have anything that you know about. Uh, otherwise it will be all, and the next meeting will be June.
Okay. Long as I get some more messages, I mean, that's what I say, I'll schedule for at least a week in advance.
Gotcha. Um, so we have.
Do we now in June?
Uh, June fifth.
June fifth. They're moving the.
Pardon?
They're moving the.
Yeah. Um, seven, three, which is probably gonna be a hard one to get, to be honest. So we'll probably be looking at moving that meeting.
I'll. You said seven thirty?
Yeah. Yeah, um, I assume majority would be, which is going on the first Monday as we kind of said, um, several weeks ago. Um, I can send that and propose a list on that again, make sure we're free on all of dates. But ideally, we kind of hover around the first Monday of the month, that's kind of what we're setting.
Long as we're out of here, about seven o'clock was exactly going to be at the month, I have a meeting.
Okay, the only other bus, like I said, you have July third, then you have, uh, nine eleven. Um, because you have Labor Day on the first Monday, so that's the only, uh.
Okay. This is kind of a push schedule, I didn't know. If I can, I can work around.
Yes, sir.
Thanks, Mr. Speaker.
Understood, yep, I'll respect that.
So what did you say about August, August seventh?
Um. August seventh, yep, we have a, we typically have a meeting, um, four, three to nine, five morning May, we don't have, I don't have any information. So five eleven to May first, we'll be, no meeting on May first. Uh, June fifth. Uh, July third, seven thirty. Uh, we're probably looking at bumping that back to the third, we can shoot, but I'll send you notification on that. Um, August seventh, eight seven, nine, nine eleven. Because the first Monday is Labor Day. Ten two. Eleven six. And twelve four.
Anyone else have any more questions? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion.
I'll second. I'll favor.
Please adjourn.
Thank you.